I'm going to call to order the City Council for Rainbow City's Monday, September 22nd, 2025. I'm going to ask Brother Gary Cardwell if he'll lead us in the invocation and be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you stand?
Let's pray. Lord, as this council meeting is convened, we thank you again for your, for the dedication and service of each council member, for our legal counsel and our city clerk. We do ask for spirit of unity if matters of business are transacted today. Every city department, every employee is important to maintaining vital services to our great city, and those efforts do not go unnoticed and greatly appreciated. We're also thankful for, as always, for our first responders, our police and fire departments. They're highly trained and always ready to respond to protect the well-being of our communities and citizens. So while we ask for safety and protection on each one, we also ask for your continued protection over our schools as well. We thank you for all your continued blessings on our city. In Christ's name, I do pray. Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If you turn your cell phones to off or vibrate position, we would appreciate it. And I'll ask the clerk, Beth Lee. She'll take a roll call.
Anita Beblin, Randy Weiss, Jeff Prince, Jamison Jenkins, Clark Hopper, Mayor Taylor.
Here. Number five has approved the minutes of the regular meeting of September 8th and the special called meeting of September 10th of 2025, and I'd entertain a motion that we do so.
So moved.
Is there any discussion? Those in favor by saying aye. Any opposed? Number six is personnel change, and it's to post for a full-time laborer in the Recreation Department for 10 days to end on Friday, October 3rd of 2025, and I'd entertain a motion that you allow us to post for that labor position.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Those in favor by saying aye. Any opposed? Number seven is D-911 contract authorized Mayor Taylor to enter into a three-year agreement with Etowah County Communications District 911. Current contract expires October 1st of 2021, and I'd ask that you allow me that authorization.
So moved.
Is there a second? Any discussion? Those in favor by saying aye. Any opposed? Number eight is Resolution Number 25-21 authorizing Rainbow City to join the state of Alabama and other local governments as participants in the Alav- Gen- Amnel, Apodix, HICMA, N'Divier, Mylan, Sun, Zetas opioid settlement. I should have read that before I started, and I would ask that you bring that up for discussion or for passing that resolution. And I'd entertain a motion.
So moved.
Is there any discussion? Those in favor by saying aye. Any opposed? Number nine is reappoint Shirley Nichols to serve another four-year term on the library board to expire September 27th of 2029, and I'd entertain a motion that we make that reappointment.
So moved.
Is there any discussion? Those in favor by saying aye. Any opposed? Number 10 is budget revision for the library. It's increased to reflect a bonus state aid allocation of, for FY 2025 received from the APLS. Funds will be used to purchase digital audiobooks, and the amount would be for the account shown for $1,650, and I'd entertain a motion that we do that budget revision.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Those in favor by saying aye. Any opposed? Number 11 is a sponsorship request, and it's the United Way Success by Six 21st Annual Girlfriend Gala to promote children's literacy. The event will be held March 6th, 2026, and the levels are shown in what would be the pleasure of the council?
Mayor, last year we did $1,500 sponsorship, and I'd like to make a motion that we do that again.
Okay. We've got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Those in favor by saying aye. Any opposed? Number 12 is surplus street department. It's a bed cover that fits a 2015, 2024 Ford F-150 to be placed on gov deals, and also a black couch and love seat to be destroyed or thrown in the trash. And I'd entertain a motion that y'all allow us to surplus those items.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Those in favor by saying aye. Any opposed? Number 14 is, do we have anybody with public, any public comment?
Sir, I have a question.
Would you mind coming up? And Clark could get you lined up on, or Gary will. I'm sorry. I should have given you another second or two to kind of get headed in the right direction.
I didn't know I'd have to come up.
Yeah. If you just give your name and address for our, for our public record.
I just have a question about public safety.
Yes, ma'am.
Hopefully, as a yes answer, do all of our police, fire, and first responders always have Narcan available?
They do. As a matter of fact, we do that both in police and fire, and we make sure that it doesn't have, that it's not expired, and we're lucky that we have a county commissioner. Tim Ramsey is the one that supplies us with our Narcan, with, with some of the opportunities that he's given as a county commissioner, and so the answer is yes, and we're, we're super glad that we do. I was a 25-year firefighter, and I know just exactly what you can do with Narcan and how it can save lives.
I was in nursing for over 20 years, and I saw way too many deaths.
Absolutely.
That were absolutely unnecessary, ungodly, and some of the people involved were just absolute evil.
Right.
You know, I want to bring back to the public gallows, but they tell me they can't do that because they break somebody's rights.
But we found out that also, you know, just having Narcan on our, on our trucks and the apparatus for the fire department is not only to protect the public, but also to protect our first responders as well. So we appreciate you, and I appreciate your comments.
Oh, yes, sir.
Thank you. Anyone else? We'll talk to our department heads. Is there anyone from, I know that Kenneth has something that you want to share with us, Kenneth? You want to come up?
Yes, Mayor, I wanted to just thank everybody for our recycling ADM program we went on in Hunkville, helping other communities to come back Friday. It was very interesting to learn and see how other people does things. But we toured some very interesting places. We went to the, like, well, they redid everything. When it gets down to nothing left, it's trash. They burn it, makes steam out of it, send it to the rest on our, so I thought that was neat.
Yep.
And a Coke bottle, a Coke bottle, a clear bottle is, is number one, it's good stuff. It's, it'll always be good stuff. No telling how many times a Coke bottle has been reused. We watch, we watch their whole process. And a Sprite bottle is now clear instead of green because it's not environmentally friendly.
Yep.
So there's a whole lot of stuff that we learned about, a lot of things, and it's very interesting to go and see how other people do stuff, and we are doing our part. We're doing our part, but we also doing a lot of good that, we had a pretty good idea that we was, that we was, because a lot of stuff, they were really interested in seeing how we done it, and they talked about getting the word out, so I think we, we need to work on that. So tonight helps a lot of that.
That's right.
And then we had the, we talked about glass. A lot of people, they don't, glass is not a friendly, but, but there was a kind of surprise and amazed that we took glass. I carry glass to Alvo. I got a crusher, and they talked about partnering with other municipalities. You know, we got a federal steel, we left there. I got another idea too that I think would be good, but we partnered with Alvo Go Ad Recyclant. That's where we're getting rid of a lot of our stuff. So I just think it was very good to go and see what, how other people does stuff, and it was, it was nice to go, and thanks to you and the council that we went and we stayed instead of just going and getting the check, but we went to Minew and filled with the Montgomery, got the check. We've been to Pelham and got the check, but this time we went and got the check and we stayed and seen what was going. And it was very, it was very interesting.
Yep. This is the most we've ever gotten. We got $130,541.
Mayor, they was, I told you this earlier, they was two and a half million give out that day, but there was six and a half million applied for. So for us to come home with $130,000 of that Rainbow City is huge.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think that's commentary on what you guys are doing. It's also something that I always try to make sure that we lay the, the harder work, which is to be able to apply for a grant, and that was Karen Frost, my assistant. Karen, you know, went to a lot of workshops, learned how to apply for and write grants, and that's not the easiest thing in the world to do, but she's been able to land us an ADM grant every year except once since I've been here, and I think that, that we really need to tip our hat to her for that. Also with Philip, we're, we're beginning to move recycling out and become its own entity, but for years and years, Philip Hollingsworth has been the guy that's kind of helped us guide along with Kenneth in doing that. But, but we do things the right way, Kenneth, and I, and I want you to know that I appreciate that.
And we have 36 trailers.
Yeah. Yeah, I think when I came here, we had 14 or 15.
But we keep growing, and, and we appreciate the fact that we was able to go and see and do, but to be honest, we, our normal daily routine is hard to slow down. You'll leave here all winter, you're not coming back to private.
Right.
There's a lot, a lot happening at the time.
Well, we appreciate you, and I think that we really need to say, you know, a big thank you to the Alabama Department Environmental Management. They are, they are putting that money where it needs to be, and like Philip said, six and a half million dollars was asked for, a couple million dollars got awarded, and we were a, a big portion of that, a high percentage of what, of the money that was, that was given out, and, and I can't do anything but thank them and, and thank you guys for what y'all do.
And we own a good, hey, I got the guy, the ADM guy, that's district, there's three districts in Alabama, and I got his color and information, so he's a nice guy. He's actually one of the solid, we got the two.
Well, I think in, in one of the things you mentioned about us, you know, we do some shared responsibility in, in our environmental stuff with steel and also some other areas, but you know, we're the, we're the group that allowed for Southside to have their pilot program. Dana Snyder and I got together along with Philip and their supervisor over there in Southside, and they, we created a program for them, and now they have their own self-sustaining program because we helped them to write their grant, and so that they could get their own baler and begin to, just begin to stand on their own and, and do well for the citizens in Southside. So I have to, have to say, you know, thank you to Dana for being open to that, and honestly, being open to allow another city to help them develop a program. You know, politics are filled with egos, and people that believe they're way more important than they really are, and what she, what she showed was humility in her public service, and, and I tip my hat to her for that.
She did, Mayor, and she, see, they partnered with us, and we did with them for a year and a half. So when, when they got their grant money for the baler, they don't have to have trailers. They had them trailers first.
Yep.
And when they got their baler, they, we went, we went out and helped them unload these, got street department guys, we went out and helped unload it and set it up.
Yep.
They went to baler on their own. So it was, yeah, they, they asked a lot of questions, but, but we knew the answers. We've been doing it a long time.
They're doing it a long time.
So I think they, they've done very well, and yeah, I think they're doing very well over there, and the thing is going good, and they got a good program going.
Yeah. There's no doubt about that, and I appreciate it. Thank you. I appreciate you. Anyone else? Any of our other guys? Cody?
Yeah.
You know, you got to come up here. We're not going to let you get off easy.
We just wanted to tell you all from the street department, mayor, council, thank you all for entrusting Brent and myself. You know, we've had some changes down there, and all of our guys are doing really well, especially with everything we got going on, helping Gang Day kind of roll with the punches on things. So just, everybody's kind of falling in where they need to be, and really just let the public know that if there's anything, you know, I've had several people tell me, you know, they've been asking for this, that, or the other on street signs. Just let us know, you know, we'll be glad to, glad to get them fixed up with it.
We appreciate it. We appreciate what you guys are doing. Can't get Brent to come up here and talk.
No, he sent me up here.
Brent's just Cody's amen section, just so y'all know. But, yeah, y'all are doing, y'all done a really, really good job, and we appreciate all that you're doing. With that, is there anyone else? Anybody? I would say that we, we, we just recently found out, you know, one of the things that we do and have been doing, because our police chief has been very proactive in trying to not only fight crime, but prevent crime, and I think that's probably the most important part is through community policing, you know, make us very aware of our surroundings and what we're doing. And one of the things that we've done is, is we put together an electronic, almost covering of this city. You know, we've got our perimeter that's protected by cameras that are, that digitally read license plate, you know, and so we know when somebody's in here to do, you know, that, that has evil intent, our police department is picking those people up and putting them where they belong. And because of that, we've been recognized by outside agencies, and those outside agencies are beginning to include us as a part of their electronic crime prevention. And to find that out is, is pretty special. So we're, we're beginning to start to receive equipment, cameras, and additional protections for our city just because we had a forward-thinking chief and forward-thinking officer corps that said that they're not afraid to, to look into and embrace technology, and I appreciate that, chief, and you let your guys know that. So with that, we'll start out, and we'll start with Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I want to thank everybody, Cody, Brent, Philip, and Ken for all you guys are doing. It, it's an absolute honor to be able to assist you guys in performing the work you do for the people of Rainbow City. It goes without saying that our city's on the move, and as we're on the move, we're not leaving people behind. We're not trying to outgrow what makes people want to live here, but at the same time, we want to provide the services and, and opportunities that people expect, and hats off to all you guys for the role you play in that. It's a, and our, public safety as well, that goes without saying, with, with Kemp and Tim and all those guys. So, and I know I left a lot of people out, so I won't, I won't name anymore, but we have a great system here. It, it's one of those things where you don't make the mayor's job easier, which makes our job easier, and everything works in such a way that, that people have little to complain about. We live in a community that is bordered by other cities, and their residents are constantly talking about what Rainbow City does right, and I think Jonathan Edwards called it a city on the hill. We're not really on a hill, but I do think other cities are looking up to us. And I'm saying that with nothing about, bad about their cities. There's things that I know that we wish we had that some of them have, but at the same time, it's a testimony to our employees and even more so our residents who put us in the situation to be able to do this. And again, I want to reemphasize that, especially in a time in our country where there's so much division, so much tragedy, as I'm sure some others will talk about, that our country needs to come together, our communities need to come together, and I appreciate the residents of Rainbow City for always pulling themselves up by the bootstraps and making us that city on a hill. Thank you.
Ms. Bedwell.
I was waiting my turn, thanks, Mayor. Hey, just was listening to Brother Gary tonight as he had our opening prayer, and he said something that just was in a nutshell, that it takes everybody, every employee here to make what we have, and it does. And then along with that, it takes every citizen here combined with that group to make what Rainbow City is. So it, I am very appreciative of both, both of these groups and how everything, as Randy said, inter- ties and works together. I just wanted to throw out a little comment about our recycling program. I remember in a previous administration, and we were discussing one day, and Tim Ramsey comes buzzing in the door with this idea in his head, just so excited he couldn't stand himself about recycling. And to think that it was, oof, just a, a flirty somewhat idea, and, and we had nothing to work with, and it, it was just a thought, like everything else is, and, but it takes, and everything is this way. It takes dedication to see something through. It takes folks pushing it and people participating, and us teaching our children at school. There's just so much involved in everything that we do, and I'm very proud that Rainbow City, in more ways than one, not just in recycling, but in everything that we have looked at different features and said, this is something that we need to do as, as we are growing and improving. And I'm very proud of our recycling program, and very proud that Tim Ramsey decided that night that he just had a brainstorm and that needed to happen, and so that was the beginning of it. But thank you each for being here and being a part of, of everything, and Kenneth, your department, and each one of you for what we do. And now you've got a big check, and are going to get to do some builds and improvements down there, which will be awesome. So, and I just appreciate the, the support that we all get from everyone in Rainbow City. Thank you.
Mr. Hopper.
Thank you, Mayor. Wow, I'm going to be the law window one tonight because I have a bunch of notes up here. All right, let's start here. This past weekend, I went to Walmart, and we went to the four-way stop there by Guthrie's coming out of Camp Cyberton, and we thought they were taking up our money, and they weren't. They were young men, passed down drinks, inviting us to Cyberton Baptist Church for a four-day revival. And Brother Gary, I believe you're preaching on September 30th, correct?
Yes, sir.
And Luke Jenkins, he's not at Harvest Field?
So.
Cyberton? So he's at Cyberton now. All right. No, I'm talking about Luke Jenkins. You know who I'm talking about?
I'm trying to.
I think he's a youth pastor.
I'm preaching September 30th out of Cyberton out in.
Correct. It's a four-day. When you're doing the 30th, I was talking about on October 1st. Reason, I'm pointing this out because you're connected to us here in Rainbow City, and I think he preaches on the payroll at Harvest Field.
I saw that and kept that in mind.
And so I wanted to stress that half of them got some kind of Rainbow City connection. October 6th, 5:00 PM, we won't have a council meeting in between now and then. The old guests and old cops is relocating their dinner back to Western Sizzlin from the FOP Lodge, and I think that's big. Public Works, I want to give y'all a shout out. One of the things y'all two are doing different, you're keeping these roads clean. When somebody's putting something out on the sidewalk, you're picking it up. Y'all have been up and down my road on Rainbow Haven, which is dead-end road. Every time it's like we put something out, boom, next day, y'all they're picking it up, and that makes this city look a lot cleaner instead of going to wait on once a week. Now, Cody, you need help with road signs? I need one on my driveway that says Hops Place. Why y'all laughing? All right. I think the E-911 contract, Mayor, and the chiefs, I want to credit y'all. That's a movement that's been going on statewide to get us on to. That's a movement that's been going on statewide to get us onto. The biggest factor on that is everything will be in one area, one room. Old days, remember, I started in 1988, you'd have a dispatcher on the telephone giving us blow-by-blow on what we called a 10-100, which would be a car chase, and with different cities. So I think it's pretty neat that now they're all going to be housed together, and this is going throughout. I'm trying to be quick. Library, I can't talk enough about it. We spent tonight on it, on three different things. Library is so important for our children. Let's get them off these notepads and games, roadblocks and all that. Get them in a book. Let them learn how, about Tom Sawyer, Huck Finn, and Laura Ingalls, you know, and all these things that we kind of grew up on. And last but not least, I do want to give a shout out to our children, because you know I love doing that. This past Friday, me and Christie went to John Jones Elementary with the fifth grade, did a 250th program, and y'all missed it. Now, they do need a better sound system so you can hear it better, but boy, I thought I was having flashback to that school, was it school rock thing? They sang the songs and did that, and I just want to give them a shout out for the program that they put on. All right, Mayor.
Okay. I'm sorry, I was making a note. Thursday, September 25th is the grand opening for Aldi at 3331 Rainbow Drive. We're thrilled to death to know that Aldi's come, Aldi's coming into our city. We've known that for quite a while, and then when the Windexe buyout came about, we were absolutely ecstatic to know that Aldi was going to go ahead and occupy that space. It made it faster to market and also just a really, really good opportunity for our shoppers to have an alternative to the other grocery stores and the things that Aldi offers that others don't. Our community market is Monday, Wednesday, and Friday from 7:00 till 12:00. Just an incredible job. It just gets bigger and better every year, and that's, we brag on Andy, and Cody has a portion in that, a little smaller portion now because he's actually got a good job now. But we do appreciate the fact that they've taken that community market and grown it into something that people around here absolutely love. To Jim Stewart, John J. Rowe, and Mike Bolton, they are now our people that are in the booth and providing sound and always supporting us when it comes to sound and being able to put the voice of this city out. And I appreciate you, Jims, here in the, in the room, and thank you, Jim, for all that you, that you've done. And I know those other two guys are up in the booth, and I appreciate them as well. You mentioned Tim Ramsey. I spent a little time this week with Tim Ramsey, and we actually talked a little bit about the recycling and where that all was borne out. I think one of the things that I can say about that is that continuity of administration is so critical, and I'm so thankful to have had my predecessor, you know, put things in place, and then I came in with no intent at all to change some of the great things that he was doing. It was my job to come in and add to that and make even the things that they were doing at that time better. And I believe that this council has continued to do that. But I do appreciate the fact of what our beginnings were, somewhat humble at times, but there's no doubt about we've been able to expand our services, and that has to do with, with just hearing, hearing the people that we work for, and I hope we'll always continue to do that. Tomorrow is voting day, not in this city, thankfully, and I believe I can get an amen out of the amen corner over here.
And here.
And from our clerk, no doubt. But tomorrow is a very critical day, and I know we all have friends in some of these other cities, and we watch people come and go in elections, but I can say this, that's why great men and women fought and died for this country and for that right, and that's the ability for us to have the freedom to go out and cast our vote in the way that we see best, not only for ourselves, but for our common and shared cities and communities. And with that, I'd entertain a motion that we adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, guys. Thank you for being here.